Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August 8th meeting of the La Crosse Common Council. I want to welcome everyone and note that council members Weaver and Podeski are excused tonight. For those who are able, please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by our invocation. And tonight's invocation is from Pastor Rufus Parker of Calvary Apostolic Church.
Oh gracious God, we come to you tonight, Lord. We come humbly as we can before you. Father, I pray for this council tonight. You have chosen these men and women for such a time as this. Their task before them is great. They must make wise and sound decisions in their dealings in businesses. I ask that you give each one of them, Lord, wisdom, knowledge, and understanding of the things they have to accomplish. I pray for their families and their jobs that they have been called to do, that it will bless our great city and our great surrounding areas. I pray for our police officers, our first responders, and all those that are laboring, God, to make our city a great city. Let your hand be upon each and every one of them, every member in this community. Surround them, protect them, bless them. Let your perfect will be done in all things, and we give you glory, honor, and praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. We move on to our agenda. The first item up is the approval of the minutes of the July 11th, 2019 meeting. I see a motion has been made by Councilmember Richmond, seconded by Councilmember Menninger to approve. Are there any questions or discussion on the minutes from last month? I see no request to speak on my screen, so please go ahead and cast your vote. Again, the motion is to approve. The motion carries 11 to 0. The minutes are approved. We move on to reports. Item 19-1067, report of the Director of Finance for the month of June 2019. Motion has been made by Councilmember Richmond, seconded by Councilmember Ostrom, to receive and file any discussion on the Finance Director Report. I see no request to speak. Please go ahead and cast your vote. Motion passes by a vote of 11 to 0. That report is received and filed. Next is item 19-1144, Report of the Fire Department, Division of Fire Prevention and Building Safety on Inspections and Permit Revenue for the Month of July 2019. Motion has been made by Councilmember Ostrom, seconded by Councilmember Newmeister, to receive and file any discussion on the inspection report. I see no request to speak. Please go ahead and cast your vote. The vote is 11 to 0 in favor. That motion passes. That item is received and filed. Next, we move on to our notices and discussions. If you have an item that you would like to share with the group, please hit your Request to Speak button, and I will recognize you. First up is Councilmember Jansen.
I would just like to offer a very generous thank you to our Parks Director. Last Friday afternoon, we opened up veterans' memorial pool. We had a great attendance from staff and council members and a whole lot of residents from the City of La Crosse. I counted at least five or six neighborhood associations that were represented. If you haven't already put this on your calendar, coming up, August 20th at 5:30, the YMCA from La Crosse, their swim team is collaborating with the fundraising committee to do a swim meet. And then, we are going to be having a grand opening celebration on Tuesday, August 27th at 5:30, so I hope to see all of you there. I'm happy to announce, if you haven't heard, that an anonymous donor came forward when we had 80,000 left to fundraise for. And so now, we're probably, if we match that 40,000, we will have reached the $500,000 goal, so I don't see that being an issue. Today, we received a $5,000 donation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else with anything to share under notices or discussion? Anyone else? Going once, going twice, going three times? Okay. If it is okay with the group, we do have a guest here tonight, and that is Tom Calico from Baker Tilly. He is going to go over two of the items on our agenda for sale of our borrowing, and those are under the consent. So those are both 19-1075, the resolution confirming the sale, determining rates of interest, and other details in levying taxes in connection with not to exceed 7,160,000 -- I'm sorry, yes, 7,160,000 aggregate principal amount of general obligation corporate purpose bonds, Series 2019A of the City of La Crosse, La Crosse County, Wisconsin. If folks have no objection, I would ask Tom to give us a brief report, and then we'll take action on this one, and we'll move right on to the next one then after that. So, good evening, Tom.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you very much. Good evening, councilmembers. Pleased to give you a report on today's sale of general obligation corporate purpose bonds and general obligation promissory notes. The action before you is to consider two resolutions, one for the bonds, one for the notes. These are, as the mayor stated, $6,160,000 in principal 15-year bonds and $1,405,000 in principal amount 10-year notes. These bonds and notes will finance various capital projects that were detailed in your 2019 to 2023 capital improvement program. We took note bids at 10:00 a.m. today, and we took bids on the bonds at 11:00 a.m. today. On the bonds, we received four bids, representing 36 banks in total, because some of the banks bid as syndicates. The winner was Raymond James out of St. Petersburg, Florida, at a true interest cost of 1.95%. That's 1.95%. I'm going to put that in perspective for you here in just a minute. We received four bids on the notes. That was representing 33 banks in total. The winner was again Raymond James, at a true interest cost of 1.6%. We feel these bids are very competitive, based on market indices. As I said, to put it in some perspective, I have before me your past sales, and it was interesting to note that in 2006, so this was prior to the recession, we sold bonds of comparable duration at a true interest cost of 3.97% compared to the 1.94 that we have with this issue. So, that gives you some sense of how much rates have come down since the beginning of the Great Recession, and they have stayed low during that time. Comparing to a 2006 note issue, we sold notes at 3.92% in 2006 versus the 1.59. So, gives you some idea of just how great rates are right now. As we typically do with all of your bond and note issues, we did seek a rating from Standard and Poor's. They affirmed the city's AA rating and applied that rating to both the bonds and the notes. In their report, they cited various strengths of the city. Those included financial management, your budgetary performance, which is whether you're producing a surplus or a deficit each year, and flexibility, which is really your fund balance. And then, the other strength noted was the city's liquidity. So with that, we would certainly recommend awarding the bonds and notes to Raymond James. I want to commend the fine work of your finance department, led by Valerie Fenske, and your Bond Council, Chapman and Cutler, led by Kent Flores. I get to stand up here and give you the good news, but all those people contributed to making this happen. It's been our pleasure to serve the City of La Crosse, and we appreciate the opportunity. I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Thank you, Tom. I appreciate that. Are there any questions from the councilmembers on the good news related to the interest rates for the bonds? Okay, I see no questions. I do see a motion to adopt by Council President Gall, seconded by Councilmember Menninger. And then, I would entertain a motion to amend that resolution to include the interest rate in the selection of Raymond James. Basically, we need to fill in the blanks with the resolution. And I see a motion here has been made by Councilmember Menninger, seconded by Councilmember Newmeister, to amend with that selection of Raymond James with the interest rates as noted. I would recognize Councilmember Richmond to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a question. That was 19-1075, correct?
Yes, that's the legislation number, correct.
Okay. And that requires 2/3 vote, but do we need to vote on the suspension of the council rule?
Yeah, you're probably right, for both of those, so.
Thank you.
I'll just give a second here for Terry. Can we do that real quick, Terry? We'll pause that and move to the suspension of the rule.
Can you finish this vote, and then we'll come back and do it as amended. Do this, and then we'll go to the suspension of the rule, and then come back and do the suspension.
Okay. So let's do that first. Let's dispatch with the amendment. And again, that amendment is to select Raymond James with the interest rate as noted. Are there any questions or discussion on that amendment? I see no questions. Please go ahead and cast your vote. Again, the motion is to amend. The vote is 11 to 0 in favor. That motion passes, and that amendment is approved. I would entertain, do you want me to go ahead and -- all right, so now we're getting the suspension of the rules up on the floor. I see a motion has been made by Council President Gall, seconded by Councilmember Richmond, to approve the suspension of Rule Number 8 for the following items, which does require 2/3 vote. And those are Items 19-1070, 1075, 1076, 1079, and 1119. Please go ahead and cast your vote. That motion carries 11 to 0, so the rule is suspended for those items, and thank you, Councilmember Richmond, for catching that. So we'll go back to item now, 19-1075. I would entertain a motion to adopt as amended. And I see a motion has been made by Council President Gall, seconded by Councilmember Christians. Any discussion? I see no request to speak. Please go ahead and cast your vote. The vote is 11 to 0 in favor. That motion passes, and that resolution and sale is approved as amended. So let's then move on to Item 19-1076, and I would ask if Tom could come forward again to go through the promissory note report and see if there's any questions or any other discussion. And just so we know, there is a motion now on the floor to adopt that from Councilmember Richmond, seconded by Councilmember Ostrom. So, go ahead, Tom, if there's anything else you would like to share.
I thank you for the invitation, Mayor. I really don't have anything to add to my prior report.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions on the promissory note results? I would recognize Councilmember Olson to speak.
Thank you, Your Honor. Maybe this is just for my own edification, being somewhat new on council, but I see in the legislation, it says it was not to exceed 1,450,000, and I see the price indicated on the sheet that was handed out is 1,560,000. Could I receive an explanation as to why the amount is allowed to be greater than what was outlined in the legislation?
I'll ask Valerie Fenske to address that once she's had a chance to look here.
Thank you, Mayor. The amount that you're seeing on the sheet that was passed out, so there's still the aggregate principal amount of the $1,405,000, and that's the amount in the resolution, that's the amount, the principal amount of the notes that are issued. The $1,560 that you're referring to, that is, and maybe, Tom, you can help with that a little bit. So for the aggregate principal amount of $1,405,000, we'll pay you $1,560,000. That's what we will be receiving from Raymond James?
Correct. So, a common practice in the investment banking industry is, in a time where it is expected that interest rates will rise, and certainly, we're at one of those times now, they want a bond with a coupon, so the coupon is the stated rate of interest on the bond. They want a bond with a higher coupon, because bond investors like that, because it makes the bond easier to sell in the future. So this is where it gets a little wonky. So they have, like, for example, some of the bonds have a 5% coupon on them. Well, clearly, as I stated earlier, you're not paying 5% interest. So what they do is, they pay you a premium. They pay you more than the face value of the bond, so that when you take into account the interest rate that's on the bond, and the fact that they paid you a premium net, you end up with a lower interest rate than what's stated on the bond. And it's strictly done for, you know, as I say, marketing practices. And in fact, all of the bids that we received for both the bonds and the notes were all what we call premium bids. So what happens is, you get that premium, and then, under state statute, you then take that and you use that to help pay the principal and interest on the bonds until that premium is then spent. It ends up being a wash to the city, but it's just something that, you know, the industry demands. Does that help?
[inaudible]
Yeah, this is where it gets a little bit kind of deep into the whole public finance realm. But, yeah, I think the main assurance is, you didn't borrow more than, in principal amount, you didn't borrow more than what you had said you were going to borrow, and this technique of these premiums is, like I say, basically a wash to the city.
Okay. Thank you, Tom. Any other questions for Tom? Okay, I see there is a motion to amend this resolution to update that with the selection of Raymond James and Associates and the interest rate as noted. That is made by Council President Gall and seconded by Councilmember Ostrom. Any other discussion on that amendment? Please go ahead and cast your vote. The motion is to approve the amendment. The vote is 11 to 0 in favor. That motion passes. I would now entertain a motion to approve as amended, and a motion has been made by Councilmember Richmond, seconded by Councilmember Newmeister, to approve as amended. Any discussion? I see no request to speak. Please go ahead and cast your vote. The vote is 11 to 0 in favor. The motion passes. That item, that resolution and sale is approved as amended. So thank you, Tom. All right, I'm going to jump then back to our Common Council Matters. First item up is 19-1137. That's a resolution approving August 2019 engineering estimates. A motion has been made by Councilmember Richmond, seconded by Councilmember Menninger, to adopt. Is there any discussion? I see no request to speak from the councilmembers. Please go ahead and cast your vote. The vote is 11 to 0 in favor. That motion passes, and that resolution is adopted. Next item is 19-1169, a resolution approving the 2019 bills paid in August of 2019. A motion has been made by Councilmember Christians, seconded by Councilmember Ostrom, to adopt. Any discussion? Seeing none, please go ahead and cast your vote. The vote is 11 to 0 in favor. That motion is passed, and resolution is adopted. We move on to appointments by the Mayor, 19-1151, to the City of La Crosse Arts Board, Barry McKnight, Dylan McCartel, and Dick Record; to the International Committee, Melissa Gifer, Mary Rohr, Emily Volden, Todd By, Heather Dutcher, and Irene Barmore; to the Safe Routes to School Steering Committee, Matthew Gallagher, Virginia Lehrer, Larry Slesnikow, Michael Freibler, Jim Longhorst, Linda Lee, Josh Larson, Jack Zabrowski, and Jackie Eastwood. Motion is amended to confirm by Councilmember Richmond, seconded by Councilmember Newmeister. Any discussion? Seeing none, please go ahead and cast your vote. The vote is 11 to 0 in favor. The motion passes, and those appointments are confirmed. We move on next, then. We've dispatched with the suspension of the rule. We move on to report of bids, quotes recommended to be adopted. The first of those is 19-1036, a report of bids and resolution awarding the contract to Fowler &amp; Hammer, Inc., in the amount of $148,905.13 for the 2019 Streetscaping St. Andrews Street Project. Motion has been made by Councilmember Menninger, seconded by Councilmember Christians, to adopt. Any discussion? I see no request to speak. Please go ahead and cast your vote. The vote is 11 to 0 in favor. The motion passes, and that report and bid is awarded. Next is Item 19-1072, Report of Quotes and Resolution Awarding Contract to Pelenger Electric, Inc., in the amount of $19,872.80 for the Mulberry Lane Lighting Project. Proudly, a motion has been made by Councilmember Richmond, seconded by Councilmember Ostrom, to adopt. Any discussion? Please go ahead, or, yeah, go ahead and cast your vote. I don't see any request to speak. The vote is 11 to 0 in favor. That motion passes, and that report and quote are awarded. Next, we move on to Item 19-1149, a report of quotes and resolution awarding the contract to Lunda Construction Company in the amount of $283,163 for the George Street Bridge Rehabilitation Project. A motion has been made by Councilmember Ostrom, seconded by Councilmember Newmeister, to adopt. Any discussion? I see no request to speak. Please go ahead and cast your vote. Again, the motion is to adopt. The vote is 11 to 0 in favor. The motion passes, and that report and the resolution for that project are awarded. Next is Item 19-1150, Report of Quotes and Resolution Awarding Contract to Lunda Construction Company in the amount of $357,949 for the Rose Street and Copeland Avenue Bridges Rehabilitation Project. Motion has been made by Councilmember Jansen, seconded by Councilmember Christians, to adopt. Any discussion? I see no request to speak. Please go ahead and cast your vote. The motion passes. The vote was 11 to 0. That report and resolution for that project are awarded. We move on to items recommended to be adopted. First up is Item 19-0953, amended resolution authorizing the use of funds for a floodplain relief program. The vote out of committee was 5 to 0 in favor with one abstention, and that was from the Finance and Personnel Committee. A motion has been made to adopt by Councilmember Richmond, seconded by Councilmember Jansen. Is there any discussion? I see no request to speak. Please go ahead and cast your vote. The vote is 11 to 0 in favor. That motion passes, and that amended resolution is adopted. Next is 19-1003, a resolution approving the application of Mayo Clinic Health System for Ansysken Medical Center for a Conditional Use Permit, allowing demolition of existing buildings for construction of a parking lot at 10011007 Jackson Street and 930 11th Street South. The vote was 3 to 2 in favor from the Judiciary and Administration Committee. A motion has been made by Councilmember Ostrom, seconded by Council President Gall, to adopt. And I would recognize Councilmember Olson to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a technicality, in the draft minutes for the Judiciary Administrative Vote from last week, it lists me as voting in opposition, and Councilmember Podeski is voting in favor, and that was reversed. So there is a typo in the minutes coming out of that committee. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll make that correction. Any other discussion? I would recognize Councilmember Richmond.
Thank you, Mayor. Question, I did not look in documents to see if there was a pilot that was signed.
Yes, the pilot has been signed by both the city and by Mayo. Any other, next, I would recognize Councilmember Happel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've struggled somewhat with this one. Kathy Van Maron, who communicated with all of us, one of my favorite constituents, and although I did not agree with her concerns with respect to the parking aspect, because that's something that has to happen, I do share her concerns with the elimination of housing. I think I've said many times in the past that one of the problems we have in La Crosse is not enough people, and if we don't have places for people to live, we're not going to have enough people. Despite that, I'm going to, and I spoke with Councilmember Olson regarding this issue, and it's in her district, so although I'm on the edge, I often defer to the council members' opinion in a district, and Jessica, I'm going to defer to your opinion here and vote in support of this, so.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? I see no other request. Again, the motion is to adopt. Please go ahead and cast your vote. The vote is 9 to 2 in favor. The two no votes were Councilmembers Jansen and Kalo. That motion does pass, and that resolution and conditional use permit are approved. We move on to Item 19-1077, Resolution Denying Application of Michael W. Quinones for a Beverage Operator's License and Appeal of Denial by the Police Department. The vote out of the Judiciary and Administration Committee was 3 to 2, and that was to deny. I see a motion has been made by Councilmember Richmond, seconded by Council President Gall. Any discussion? I see no request to speak. Please go ahead and cast your vote. The vote was 10 to 1 in favor. The one no vote was Councilmember Olson. That motion passes, and that resolution to deny has been approved. We are on to the consent agenda. If you have an item that you would like to be, have a separate vote to be held out, hit your request to speak, and I will recognize you. First up, I would recognize Councilmember Richmond.
Thank you, Your Honor. I need to make a motion to amend, to delete the application of Catchever &amp; Company, LLC for Class B Winery. It is 19-1055, under various licenses.
Okay, so probably what we should do is, we should take that item up. We should divide the question to pull that one out separately?
Mayor, according to the city clerk, we don't need to divide it.
Oh, okay.
So just hold out that particular one.
So just hold out that individual one, out of item, let's see, that's Item 19-1055? Is that the correct item?
Yes.
Yes. That's the resolution granting various license applications pursuant to Chapters 4, 6, and/or 10 of the La Crosse Municipal Code for the remainder of the license period of 2019 through 2020 of August. And the motion, if you could just restate that, it's for the, well, go ahead.
Sure. The motion is to delete the application of Catchever &amp; Company, LLC for the Class B Winery. It has been withdrawn by the applicant. They applied for a state license, so they were not in need of this. Thank you.
Is there a second to that motion? Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Richmond, seconded by Councilmember Newmeister, to delete the application of Catchever &amp; Company for the Class B license? And I see that's up on the screen now. Is there any discussion on that?
Yeah, we got amendments, that's all correct.
Yeah, this is to amend the entire list, so we'll do a motion, or we'll do an, adopt as amended after we dispatch with this, I believe. Okay, so I don't see any other discussion, so please Okay, so I don't see any other discussion, so please go ahead and cast your vote. Again, this is to delete the application from Catchever. That motion passes by a vote of 11 to 0, so now I would entertain a motion to adopt this item as amended, and that motion has been made by Councilmember Ostrom, seconded by Councilmember Richmond. Councilmember Richmond, did you want to speak on that? Okay. Any other discussion on that? The motion is to adopt as amended. I see no other request to speak. Please go ahead and cast your vote. The vote is 11 to 0 in favor. That motion passes, and that is adopted as amended. And Councilmember Richmond is showing us her Roberts Rules of Order here tonight again, so... All right, so let's see. Do we have any other items that we want held out separately for a vote? I don't see any. Okay, I heard a motion by Council President Gall to move the rest of the consent agenda, seconded by Councilmember Olson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. How about a motion to adjourn? I heard a motion by Councilmember Newmeister, seconded by Councilmember Olson, to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you all. Have a good night.